I'm going to call the March Meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order, and if you'll rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, could we have a roll call, Kelly?
Kimball?
Here.
Carey?
Here.
Ostemeyer?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Borders?
Here.
Latham?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present.
Okay, Russ, do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay. Ceremonies, appointments, announcements, and presentations, it looks like we have election of the Chair and the Vice Chair for the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to move that Mr. Lynn Borders retain his chairmanship at this time.
Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations?
No.
No.
Any other nominations?
You're doing a great job, Mr. Borders.
All right, I guess we're so done. How about for Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I nominate that Mr. Davis here retain his spot as Vice Chair.
Okay, any other nominations?
Any other?
No.
No.
Any other nominations?
No.
Hearing none, so be it. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Borders.
All right, we have two public hearings this evening on the agenda. If you would like to speak at either one of those hearings, you need to fill out a form on the podium in the back of the room and turn that into Kelly prior to the opening of the public hearing. Any questions about that?
Declaration of conflict.
We're getting there.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any, from the council positions, do we have any conflict of interest this evening? No. Nope. Fantastic. Then I would move for approval of the consent calendar.
Move to approve as presented?
Motion?
I second.
And a second. Kelly, roll call.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, citizens' comments, this is a time when anyone from the audience can speak as long as it doesn't conflict with an agenda item. So, do we have any comments from public? Hearing none, guess we'll move forward. Any unfinished or old business?
No unfinished or old business, thank you.
Okay. And we get into the time for the public hearings, so this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Timothy Track subdivision S-14-02. John, could you introduce?
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Associate Planner here with City Post Falls, introducing the Timothy Track subdivision, file number S-14-02. The applicant is CGMD LLC, and the applicant's representative is here this evening. The applicant is requesting approval to subdivide approximately two acres of R1, single-family residential property into eight lots. Request and action is to hear the proposal, determine that the subdivision meets the requirements of the ordinance, and recommend approval of the subdivision to City Council along with appropriate conditions. Project location is as you see here in the asterisk, that location. More specifically, it is north of Maplewood Avenue, here outlined in red, and just at the end of Keon Court, and it would be west of Seeley Street, if you're familiar where The, as stated in the intro, it's about two acres. The current land use is residential, there's an existing single-family home on it. Current zoning is R1, single-family residential. The surrounding land use is residential in nature, and then north of the railroad tracks is some industrial uses. Comp plan designation is residential, and the density is approximately 4.1 lots an As stated, to the west is single-family R1 for the surrounding zoning. To the north, industrial and heavy industrial zoning. And to the south and east of the property, our property is in Cootney County. Both the water and the sewer would be provided by the City Post Falls, and the access would be off Keon Court. So, this would be staff's introduction of the proposal. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Questions for staff at this time?
No.
None? Okay, we'll hear from the applicant. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Robert Tate, 1103 North Fourth, Cortlande, for the applicant. We really don't have a whole lot to add that's not already in the staff report, so we'll try and be brief. I know there's more important things going on this evening. This is a logical extension of existing city services in the city. We've previously come before you as an annexation request, and that's been approved, and as part of that annexation, we've already dedicated the right-of-way off of Maplewood Avenue for this project. So, I mean, other than that, I really don't have any more to add than what's already in front of you unless you have questions.
Any questions of the applicant at this point?
None.
Thank you very much. John, we'll have the staff report.
So, in the Planning Division's review, the lots meet and exceed the minimum lot dimensions for an R1 zoning district property. The proposed development would be compatible with the nearby subdivisions in the area. The development would be, expect to be completed in one phase, and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and Keon Court would be extended to facilitate the subdivision. Engineering Division commented that the proposed layout of Keon Court is acceptable and conforms with city standards, that the east end of Keon Court would be configured to accommodate future extensions to the east. And I'll go back to that map earlier. So, you have undeveloped properties at this location, so it's going to be configured so as this area develops, Keon Court could provide access. Fire code requirements would also be along the east end for a temporary tournament, turnaround, as it develops with the proposed subdivision. And that Maplewood Avenue's design conforms to the manner that the subdivisions to the west have been constructed for that roadway. And driveway ingress and egress for residential properties directly to Maplewood Avenue would be prohibited as part of the plat. And the homeowners' association would be created for the irrigation and maintenance for the right-of-way drainage along Maplewood Avenue. In regards to sanitary sewer, it would be extended per the wastewater master plan. And for domestic water, there'd be some reimbursement for oversizing a water main in Maplewood Avenue, and that would be negotiated at the time of the construction improvement agreement. We have received comments from the Cootney County Fire and Rescue, and they have no issues with the proposed project. So, at this time, it would conclude staff report. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Questions for John?
No.
None?
I do not.
Nancy?
I do not.
Brad?
No.
Okay. Thank you, John. This time, do we have any testimony? Those in favor of?
We do not.
Those that are neutral?
We do not.
Anyone opposed?
We do not.
Yeah, I guess we don't have any testimony, so I guess we don't have any need for rebuttal from the applicant. Questions of staff at this point? Still none?
No.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing for Timothy Tracks and open for discussion.
I just think it appears to be, it fits all the criteria for the subdivision, and it appears to be a natural movement along there, you know, just like all the rest of the stuff in the immediate area, just the natural progression there of the housing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, meets the ordinance, so I think that's probably the most important part.
Yeah.
Ryan?
No, meets the ordinance, it's cohesive, it fits, it makes sense to me.
Okay? Nancy?
I agree.
Agree, Brad?
Yep. Hey, you've got that industrial to the north, but you have that buffer of the railroad, and that's worked well for all the other homes to the west there, so I'm done.
Okay, we're ready for motion?
I would move to approve the, oh, let me find it here, Keon Court number, subdivisions number S-14-02, Timothy Track subdivision, as presented, with no conditions.
No conditions or conditions as outlined in the staff report?
Ah, correct, as outlined in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Kelly, let's have a roll call.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for the Reese variance, V-15-01. John, if you'll introduce.
Yes, the Reese variance request, case file V-15-01, the applicant is James Tyler, and the applicant's representative is here this evening. The commission is being asked to review the request for a variance and to allow duplex on a 50 by 120-foot lot or a 6,000-square-foot lot. The property is located at 211 East 10th. The property is owned medium-density multifamily, R2. Typically, duplexes are permitted outright on a 7,200-square-foot lot or greater. The Title 18 does allow for administrative discretion or an exception of 15%. That would bring the request of 7,200 down to 6,120 square feet, so the desire to develop a duplex on less than that wouldn't be permitted to be done administratively. The project location is as you see here in the asterisk, and more specifically, in blue, it's highlighted the property of the request. Here's Spokane Street and 10th Avenue, and it's between Frederick Street and Williams Street on the northwest corner of 10th and Williams. So, that is the introduction of the request from staff. Do you have?
Any questions for staff at this point?
No.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Could have the applicant come forward and produce...
My name's Richard Reese. I represent Mr. Tyler, the owner. I want to thank staff for their excellent job here, that they've done the review on this. We purchased this building from the city of, from the Cortlande School District. It was a couple of temporary classrooms, and it's not a mobile home, it was real classrooms. And we checked with the city and everything before we intended to move it. We were a little bit ignorant of the size of the lot because the zoning was R2, and so we didn't quite get our ducks all in the row there, and John has helped us tremendously getting that worked out. We want to make a nice project there where it's affordable for our senior citizens and our single-family parents who need housing, so that's what we're trying to do. We also bought the lot next door with a house that was repossessed. We're in the process of putting that up to stuff in the neighborhood there, too. So, we want to be a valuable asset to the neighborhood. That's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions for you, sir.
I'm sorry.
If you bought this property and the neighbor's property, is there a reason you didn't do a boundary line adjustment between the two to bring it into conformance?
Yes, we talked that over with staff, and we talked about moving one foot, and the reason they said that wasn't a good idea, it made two lots that weren't in compliance. So, in other words, we said, well, we just need 120 square feet, we could turn one lot into 51 feet, one lot into 49 feet, and that, according to what I was told by your planning director, that didn't make a lot of sense because, and I talked about turning it into a triplex, that we'd have three units on one lot and turn it into one lot, and once again, that didn't seem to make as much sense, okay, to the staff. The, it just created more issues, I guess, is what they were talking about, so we went with the variance.
Okay, so, if I'm understanding correctly, the property to the east, which you purchased, has an existing single-family residence on it?
Yes, it does.
And so, and it's also 50 by 120?
Yes.
So, it's a 6,000-square-foot lot, so it's an existing non-conforming use?
Yes, since you changed your code to 6,500 feet, when I spoke to the accessor, he explained to me that when those lots were divided years ago, the code was 5,500 feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, those lots were in compliance at that time, then the code got changed. So, it's an infill lot in an older neighborhood. We were granted the exception that we wouldn't have to do any public improvements on the public right-of-way. We've already been granted that exception on both lots.
Okay.
So...
And my last question for you is, are there any physical characteristics on this that make it so that, are there any physical problems or anything with this lot that, see, you have to understand, I guess, that state code for variances requires that for us to approve them, they have to have, they have to meet a certain criteria. So, the property has to meet a certain threshold where unusual natural physical characteristics of the site would make an undue necessary, or an undue hardship on you. And so, obviously, the site hasn't changed size, so what, I'm kind of, I want to help you help us get to a point where we can approve this, if there, kind of explain some sort of a, where this hardship is coming from.
Well, the unusual characteristic would be that it's zoned R2 originally, and the zoning's never been changed. And so, if the size of an R2 lot changed from 5,500 feet to 6,500 feet, then I would have thought that we would have come back through and rezoned this property. But since we didn't rezone this property, and we have multiple units all around the property, I noted over 17 units within a few blocks where there's two on a lot or a duplex sitting on the same-sized property. So, we're not doing anything unusual for the neighborhood. How did it happen that this all happened? Kind of a misunderstanding, sir, to be honest with you. And I thought I did enough due diligence myself, found out I didn't, and I have come here to comply. I, you know, we didn't make as many, maybe as many checks and balances as we should have, but once again, I did go to the city planner and the building department three times before I purchased the property, and I assume I got a little bit confused, is what I'm trying to say to you. And I made the purchase of the building, I had the building sitting out there on Southeast Way for months, and finally, I submitted complete plans to the city, thinking I had every right to put a duplex on there, then found out after I submitted the complete plans that I couldn't do that without this variance. So, I resubmitted as a single-family residence so I could get my building off the road and get the concrete in and get things in before the winter time, so we got it sitting there. Your pictures you're looking at show a lot of trees in the front that have all been cleaned up, those were all cut down in the winter time, in the bad winter hit, we just got that cleaned up in the last few weeks, and we think it's going to be a real nice looking project, and seem to be, we seem to have a favorable response from our neighbors. Some of our neighbors are here to respond favorably, and I don't know if I've helped you or not, sir, but I've tried to give you as much information as I can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Excuse me?
Right now.
No other questions, sir? Thank you very much. Okay, Kelly, testimony. Those in favor of?
One.
wishes to speak and is in support.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Blaze Kep. I live at 212 East 10th, and I've resided there for the last 40 years. That property is directly across the street from the property this gentleman's trying to develop, and for years, that side of the street has looked awful, and I see now a chance to improve that and to make our neighborhood look a lot nicer. If you go up into that part of town, I classify it as an older part of town, and two houses down from me, there's a house that's been vacant at 706 East 10th, and nobody does anything. It's a nice shore, it's, no work's done, no lawns mowed, no, no keep-up on the property at all. Every once in a while, you'll file a complaint with the city, and they'll get somebody to come out and mow the lawn or something, but I've mowed the lawn that this man has his duplex on now for five years, just to improve the neighborhood, and now I see a chance for somebody to come in and do something to our neighborhood because that's the only way it's going to get done. The city's told me that I live in an older part of town, and that they're not going to put a burden on the people for improving the streets and sidewalks and curbs and all that. So, what, what is being done is, has to be done by the land, the property owners themselves. So, what I see being done right now is an improvement to my community, and I hope you people take a serious look at it and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody to speak on neutral grounds?
We do not.
Anybody against?
We do not.
Okay, hearing no other testimony. John?
Did you want to hear the entire staff report?
Yes, I do. Okay. Okay, worry about that. Jump the gun.
So, the Planning Division reviewed the request, and the lot is zoned R2, and as stated, it is acknowledged to be too small to normally facilitate a duplex, that the R2-zoned property permits the various uses, single-family homes, duplexes, twin homes, and apartments. But these uses are permitted by a minimum lot area for dwelling unit ratio. What that is, is when you look at our bulk and placement table, you can see highlighted in yellow, the various types of built form with the minimum lot area and dwelling unit on the right-hand side, and that kind of governs how large a lot you need to build certain structures. Now, this part of town, we do permit 50 by 120-square-foot lots for single-family homes, and so we would not press the 6,500 for lots in those older parts of town, that's common practice.
John, is that, is that because that meets the 15% administrative variance from the 6,500 square feet?
It's just been a historical practice. It, I actually did research, it was in the code as allowing that exception up until 2012, 2013, and then that had been omitted accidentally as part of the text amendment, but we could continue that through a very, an exception as well within that 15%. Upon acknowledging that, staff is planning to rectify that in the next Title 18 code amendment, one way or the other, either the lots sizes are going to get small, or we're going to insert that code back into it. So, as stated, that this site has been approved for a single-family home, that the structure is also, has a lot coverage of 39%, and looking at this, you can see how for a single-family home, the maximum lot coverage is 40, and this structure is at 39. Staff did have concerns about the proposed project going forward, wanted to make sure that the quality and character of the existing neighborhood continues to grow and is maintained, and that the current condition isn't going to become contrary to public interest. Looking at the photos that were at the time of the staff report, these, you can see here is a picture of the 215, that would be the, this is the house to the east of the proposed duplex, and the branches that are laying alongside the right-of-way that the applicant has, said has been removed. This is a front view of the single-family home or the duplex being requested. This is a view of the, from Williams Street, looking west to the duplex back here, through the single-family home to the east of the project. This here's a picture of the neighbor across the street to the south of 10th, and the lawn, you can see it's well-maintained, it's overall a well-maintained lot. Same with this, another well-maintained lot landscaped, and you can see this is the property just to the west of the proposed duplex at this location. And this would be the property just to the east of Williams Street across from the proposed duplex site, or the, actually, sorry, the single-family home, but the developer is developing that whole northwest corner of Williams and 10th. But staff does believe, though, that if the property were properly cleaned up and landscaped, that the public's interest may be protected, and if commission did want to recommend approval, that staff did provide conditions to attach to the approval to bring the project in compliance with the intent of the zoning ordinance. And as Ray had mentioned, that requests are determined by an unusual natural characteristic of the site or a little enforcement of the provisions of this title, result in an unnecessary And we also heard from Mr. Reese on, on his reasoning as to why it could potentially be an unnecessary hardship. The decision criteria would be whether a little, a literal interpretation of the provisions of this title would deprive the applicant's rights, commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this title. That special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved, and which are not applicable to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. Such conditions or circumstances shall not be created by human error or oversight. That the variance, if granted, would not harm the public interest, and this is where staff took the most concern is, this number here, number three of the decision, is if it was granted by a commission, that, what conditions can come forward to protect the public interest? So, upon granting or denying the application, the commission shall specify the relevant facts considered in evaluating the application, the legal reasons for approval or denial, and the actions, if any, that the applicant could take to obtain a permit. The applicant will be notified of the decision in writing, so it's staff's intent, depending on your decisions this evening, to prepare findings and facts and conditions of your decision, bring that forward, and as well as notify the applicant of the decision and where to go forward. There were other items within the staff report I'm willing to answer as well, a lot more detailed analysis of the conditions and comments from engineering, but at this point, we have the motion options, and so if it's recommended for approval, we have the staff recommendations of conditional proven, approval based off public interest, as stated... as stated. Also, there has been some legal recommendation that if it's considered for a denial, that it'd be based off the, that there really is no unusual natural characteristics of the site that would result in a hardship. So there's been both. You've, you've gotten an approval recommendation from staff and that was primarily based off that a public interest and a conditional approval in that, as well as a recommendation of denial based off legal comments. So at this point, it would be for you as a commission to determine what would be the most appropriate for this site. I'd stand for any questions you have.
I have a couple, John.
Okay.
Can you tell me how many duplexes are in a probably, maybe a two or three-block radius that side? Do you know if there, if there are any there?
You know, I didn't do that exact query. I know that if the lots are the right size, it's not been uncommon in that area for duplexes to be permitted. And there very well may be some.
More specifically, do you know of any duplexes that have been permitted in that area on 1,200 square, or 6,000 square foot lots?
No.
And, so there haven't been any other, so there haven't been any other variances that have come forward for duplexes on a 6,000 square foot lot?
This isn't a, a common request in regards to a variance request that would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, because most often, the lack of unusual characteristics wouldn't have been established and so therefore someone wouldn't have applied for it.
Sure. And with regards to the existing use, so if there's an existing use on a property, regardless of a change in zoning ordinance, that use is grandfathered in, is that correct?
Yeah, a single-family home use would have been grandfathered in. It's just, in terms of that single-family home, the 49 feet would have brought it below what would typically be permitted outright as the applicant proposed that we had discussed.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for John? Guess not. Thank you, John.
I thank you.
Any rebuttal from our applicant at this point?
Well, as I stated earlier, I did tour the neighborhood and there was 17 duplexes or two on lots on the same size lot. And of course, those probably got put in there when the zoning was 5,500 feet instead of 6,500. Okay, so that's why they would be there. They'd be grandfathered in. And I just can, I don't think we're doing anything unusual for that old neighborhood. I think we're going to be a tremendous asset and improvement to the neighborhood.
John, could you bring up that slide of the aerial? And that way, he can show us which ones are in the area are duplexes?
Look at the streets. I don't know if it comes down. Back down on Ninth Street, right back down directly below us, I know there's one. Doesn't have a garage. It's hard for me to see and tell. There's a lot of them over to the right there on, on the other side of William, two on a lot. There's ones behind there up on Eleventh Street also that doesn't show on that picture. I say within a few blocks. I'm not saying within 15 feet, you know. So, the overall neighborhood is multi-use. And if you go down here on the other side of Frederick, on the other side of Frederick, over here on Eleventh Street, there's several duplexes right in there. And all on smaller lots. And it just so happens that the assessor came by, I don't know, about 45 days ago, and he'd been the assessor forever. And he's the one that told me about the 5,500 square foot was the assessor. When he came to, because I put a garage addition on the existing house on the other lot, he was coming over to reassess. So he's the one that told me that. Thank you.
Okay, questions for staff?
I have a question for our attorney. If I may. We're talking about unique circumstances for property. What would be the historical perspective of this? How would that be applied to unique characteristics of this variance request?
Where I've seen it come up most often has been where property drops off and there's a steep slope. And so the front setbacks can't be complied with and so the person gets a variance. And that steep slope going down the back is the unusual site characteristic that would allow you to grant a variance of the front setback if, if you wanted to do that. The, when the zoning ordinance was changed, the provision for allowing staff the 15% reduction wasn't in the ordinance. It was put in there to give staff some latitude. I don't think they should be reducing lot sizes wholesale. This duplex requires a 7200 square foot lot, I think. And so staff should have reasons for reducing the size even when they're utilizing their 15% ability to reduce lot size. It was hoped that that would allow for the change in lot sizes from 5,500 to 6,500 feet or 6,000 to 6,000, 6,500 square feet and would allow people to get consideration without having to require for, require a variance. So this, this request just exceeds staff's latitude under the ordinance to, to make an exception for this lot. But if you're going to grant it, I think you would need to find some unusual site characteristics. And we just don't have any that have been presented to us that grant you that latitude. And we're dealing with state law, Idaho Code 676516, says that the variance can be granted to an applicant only upon showing of an undue hardship because of characteristics of the site and that the variance is not in conflict with the public interest. Another one that I saw recently in another city was, there was a main line sewer going through the property. So they couldn't construct it in, in compliance with the setbacks because there was a sewer through the middle of the lot. So they got a variance on the rear, the rear setback. But it's that type of characteristic that makes you, makes it impossible for you to use the lot. And we all want lots to, to be used and people to not be denied a reasonable use of their property. But in this case, the reasonable use of the property is a single-family dwelling.
So if, it could be an undue hardship on surrounding property owners if the property is not maintained up to the same level as other properties in that particular area. In fact, could it not be that their property values could decrease if there's one piece of property that is not up to the same level as surrounding properties? So wouldn't that be undue hardship for neighbors?
Well, it's because of the characteristics of the site. And a lack of maintenance, you know, would not really qualify as a characteristic of the site. It would be a characteristic that prior property owners had imposed on the site. And I guess if, if that was something that you could consider or should consider, then it would be in everybody's interest to let sites get really run down so that they could get a building exception and construct more building on, on a smaller lot that was less, less in size than what was allowed by the ordinance.
If the commission were to approve this, what ramifications could possibly take place against the city or the commission?
Well, if, if a neighboring property owner wanted to appeal it, then the city could be looking at a litigation issue. And indeed, the last, last time I saw one of these appealed, it was, it was a very expensive, expensive process. That's very unlikely to, to happen in this case, but that is, that would be the remedy. The, the code allows administrative appeals that are on the record. So the court would just be looking at the record that was before this board and deciding if you complied with the law or not in your actions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
When was the ordinance changed from the 5,000 square feet or the 5,500 to the, to the existing? Oh, can you hear me?
You know, I'd, I'd be guessing, but I think that change has probably been in effect for more than 15 years.
So upon changing that, why wasn't the zoning changed?
Well, the lots were already platted. And the administrative exception allowed those sides, sizes of lots to still be built on as far as single-family dwellings go. Historically, when the railroad came through communities, they would flop down a plat. And the plat might have 20-foot lots on the plat. And the intention was not necessarily that everybody would build on a 20-foot lot. The intention is that someone who wanted a modest home would buy two lots and someone who wanted a grander home would buy four lots. And, and that's the way communities in this part of the world where the railroads came through developed. And so in this case, you'll see a lot of the homes are, are overlapping and on two lots. And they intended to have a home on, you know, 12,000 square foot piece of property. But the city has always recognized a 6,000 square foot lot as a, as a building lot. And indeed, would recognize a 5,500 square foot lot because, as a building lot for a single-family dwelling, because we don't want to deny any property owner of a reasonable use of their property.
Other questions for staff?
Why was it, why was it not recommended to make a lot line adjustment or create two lots or make the two lots one triplex lot? Was there still not enough space and enough square footage?
I'll go to the setback table.
Actually, the map kind of points that out because the existing lot goes right up to the edge of the house. So making a lot line adjustment, as you can see on the map, making a lot line adjustment would start taking into the house that's already built on the property.
I think the question was, why weren't the lots combined?
Right.
And it made into a triplex. And I think we'll let, let John maybe comment on that.
If you look at the 50 by 120, that's 6,000 square feet. So two of those lots would equate to about 12,000 square feet. So in the R2 zone, it is permitted to do up at 3,000 square foot a unit, doing more than two units. And you could potentially do up to four units. It's, I believe it was discussed that in order to attain that, though, you would have to do a site plan review. And in that, there's the, you would incur engineering costs for a civil design set and a civil set, as well as the application fee of 2,000 for a site plan review. So I believe that it was a decision on the, the applicant to not pursue that type of building environment versus the other. Plus, there's the incurrence of tearing down a house, too. So it was just, I think, a decision on the applicant, but I'm not, I can't speak for the applicant on, on that 100%. But I believe that that was informed.
So they would totally have to take down the house?
Not necessarily. I mean, we also have a building code official here as well that are represented from the Building Division that can speak on. It's possible that, I think you can maybe add two units to the existing through appropriate meeting building code guidelines and then go a site plan review and do three units. So.
Because they have to be, they have to be physically connected in a multifamily?
No, I mean, we could do a site plan review. You could have proposed something similar to down the street on Fourth Street. You see two duplexes and a single, like a single unit.
Yes, that's what I'm.
We approved that through a site plan review. So upon receiving a site plan review, a lot of it's speculative, but it's possible through the appropriate mitigation measures in that commercial plan, quasi-commercial plan review, that those items could have been addressed.
Okay. That's, I think that's all I have.
So John, having, the applicant having met with the city staff two or three times, and in the process of that, he's received a single-family dwelling permit for the property. We moved the structure in and now all of a sudden, we're changing to a duplex after the structure is already there? How does that work?
There was discussions prior to that, that single-family home of a duplex. And as the applicant mentioned, he did apply for duplex. And he was aware that it would have been permissible to do a single-family home. And so I believe the intent was, you know, eventually was potentially to get a duplex, but like, like the applicant said, he had two units that were sitting alongside the road and he was desiring to get it off the side of the road. So getting it on a foundation through a permissible structure legally, which it currently is, that was entered, that was completed. Not with a certificate of occupancy, but it's, it's on a foundation.
Okay, thank you.
But is it currently two units?
It's currently permitted as a single-family residence, not a duplex.
But it has two entrances?
Yeah, there's nothing in the building code that requires a single entryway for a single-family home. So more or less, you saw the plan set as one of the exhibits. On that plan set, it's recognized a single door on that, that application. But yes, the current built environment is with two doors.
Anything else for staff?
No, I think I'm good.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, John. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for a discussion of the commission. Who wants to start?
Still thinking about it.
Ray. Let's start with Ray.
Well.
Well, I feel for the applicant. I understand, I understand how code can be hard to read, hard to understand, and when you buy a piece of property and it's zoned, allowing for duplexes, how might be construed that you could do that? This particular property is, although it is zoned for a duplex, given the correct square footage, the property doesn't have that square footage. I also don't think that there are any unusual characteristics of the site. This is one of many 50 by 120-foot lots in the area. And I think outright permitting or allowing for a variance with no, basically, given the information that we have in front of us, given the record that we have in front of us, I don't think it's supportable. I don't think the record supports giving a variance in this case. I don't think that there are any natural or unusual characteristics of the site. And I don't think it's any different than any of the sites around it that would lend it towards being exceptional in any way, shape, or form. So I don't, I don't think a variance in this case is appropriate.
Ray?
I agree. I too feel, but the simple fact of matter is, having looked long and hard prior to and during, the unique characteristic of the hardship just isn't necessarily there. And again, 120 square feet, we move forward, well, now it's 175, or it's only 200, you know, my concern is precedence, and especially going back to the state code. So at this point, I just don't know that it's the right fit. Reasonable use to me seems to be R1, which is already approved.
Okay. Nancy?
Well, I, if it was zoned R1, I think I would think it was a little more cut and dry, however, it's not. And, and so I, I feel for the applicant. I think, I think it's, I think there's some gray area in it that, that, I think the staff has addressed some issues that, and, and they're recommending. So I, I feel like there must be some merit to grant a variance, but to be perfectly honest, I'm just not, I'm just still not 100% sure.
Okay. Brett?
I want to make sure we follow state statute on the issue, and it appears there's some, I agree with you, that there's some gray area, and maybe that's something staff needs to look at and work with some legislative folks to maybe clean the language up in that particular statute that allows a little bit more clarity and the flexibility of variances. So that's my take.
I see it a little more clear-cut. I mean, if you're talking about 6,500, it's a 6,000 square foot lot, and you could put a single-family home on there. 6,500 square feet, it's administratively allowed at a, at a minimum, so you can be putting a home, you can build a home on there. And that's what city lots are all about when they're zoned residential. And I think we lose sight of if something's R2 or R3, that you don't have to build to that level, you don't have to build to the highest and best use, although it behooves most people to do that, and it's not, but it's not a requirement, it's not mandatory. So I really see that as, if you can get a house on there, you're meeting the need of that lot. I guess the variances I've been involved on are, when it comes to lot size, are trying to work to get a house on there, not, not multifamily or a duplex or triplex. That's the way I see it.
Okay. Vicki?
Well, my thoughts are, if we don't have a black and white reason for a hardship, then down the line, when the next person comes in, we have nothing to say to them either. I mean, we, we have to follow our guidelines.
Well, I think, I don't see any unusual characteristics that pop out, and I think the law is pretty specific as to that we have to be able to define how that can be met in order to move this forward. So I can't, at this point, support moving it, approving the variance. That's my take on it. So with that, do we have a motion?
Quick question for council. Is this a recommendation?
No, you're the first.
You get to make the final decision. It would be appealable to the city council.
Okay. I move to deny the variance, file number V-15-01, finding that it does not meet the requirements of both the city and state code for demonstrating unusual hardship based on natural characteristics of the site.
Second?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kelly, a roll call.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hampy?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Orders?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Any new business to come before?
No, no new business this evening.
Okay, staff comments?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, commission comments? Anything for the good of the order? Thanks for the railroad.
Congratulations on your nominations and elections and, and your new positions.
Looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.